I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you all to the Planning Commission meeting in May 24, 2017. At this time, we'll have roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Commissioner Whitbach is absent today and he didn't notify us. Patignano?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please join me now in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments when the item comes up. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing must state their name and address, and could be limited by the chair. Is there anybody that wants to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from last meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of May 10, 2017, as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go, we'll move on to parcel map hearings. Let's see, action, of course we'll take these all together unless there's somebody that needs one particular one polled or anybody needs to recuse themselves. We have the tentative parcel map PPM 17-07 and 009. Is there any discussion on those? Seeing none, I guess we could take a motion to approve.
Through the chair if you could open and close, open and close the public hearing.
Oh, we do need to do that. Okay, well, we'll, we'll open the public hearing at this time if there's anything on item A or B, either one of those tentative parcel maps. Seeing none, we'll close that, and now we'll entertain a motion.
I make that motion, we approve category for PPM 17-007, category exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to construction and location of limited number of new small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-007 with a final map waiver.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we can move on to item five, which is our public hearing, so.
We got B.
B.
Oh, I forgot B, sorry. I, I gotta apologize, the last several days, I was on Amtrak to Oakland, and then I flew to Portland and I drove back from Portland, so I'm, I'm still in the high-flying mode, I guess. But on B, let's, let's take up a motion on PPM 17-007.
I move that we make a motion to approve tentative parcel map number PPM 17-009, categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-009 with a final map required.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on to item five. This is special use permit number PSP 17-025, Sam and Marlene Saika and Tom Black, architect. We have a contact on this, and that would be Aaron Bach.
Chairman Elliot, commissioners, I am Aaron Bach, chief planner to Talar County RMA, and before you today is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 17-025 for Sam Shaka. By way of background, this dehydrator has been in operation since 1951 at this location. It's on a plus or minus three acre parcel in the AE20 zone. The applicant is adding a plus or minus thousand square foot conference room building to their project site, and therefore, this is required to receive this entitlement prior to getting their building permit. This site plan shows you the location of the future conference room they're adding, as well as some other future operational efficiencies they'd like to gain by including future canopy and slabs, and potentially a future dehydrator. This project staff as lead agency is found to be categorically exempt, and the reason why the activity of projects are exempt from Sequel is because of under Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and under Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. The entitlement is found under agricultural service establishments for a dehydrator of 100 horsepower total or more, which also includes curing, processing, packaging, packing, storage, and shipping of agricultural products, walnuts, hauling, and shelling at this location, which as stated before, has been in existence since 1951. This has been found to be consistent with the general plan, and was noticed according to the law. We did receive one phone call who was interested as to why the county was harassing this poor applicant. All right. As you can see from the vicinity map, there is some proximity to Farmersville. It was within their UAB. We did not receive any comments back from the city itself. The surrounding areas are largely commercial in nature, including nurseries, so it's fairly developed on that corner right there, so it would be in line with all the surrounding uses. And that completes staff's report today.
Do you have a question? Aaron, maybe I'm a little confused. Isn't this, is this already permitted?
No, it was not permitted. It's, you could consider grandfathered, but the applicant wanted to go through the full process, so, no, it's not an existing permit.
So we're bringing them into compliance right now, basically, with the.
Yes, they're coming forward and coming into compliance so they can receive their building permits.
Okay, because had this been permitted, they wouldn't, they wouldn't need to come forth for, for the building permits on it. They just go and get them permitted, right?
We wouldn't even be talking right now.
Okay, that's why I was confused, that's why I. Okay, any other questions, Adrian? Okay, we'll open this as a public hearing, and we'll open and do any comment on this project. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sam Shaka, 1401 South Burke Street in Visalia. I am the applicant for this particular application today, and just a little bit of background, my family has been in the walnut business since 1950, and my father and I operated walnut dehydrator when I was seven or eight years old. So when we bought the Moody Walnut Dehydrator, it had been in existence since 1951. We took it over, and then we were wanting to make improvements. With the additional walnuts that had been planted in Talar County, we felt a need to be able to expand. When I met with the county staff, it was recommended that we go through this process so that any future expansions would not be an issue, that we would bring those into the building department and get those approved. My son and I are here, and so is the architect. If there's any questions from the planning commission, we'd be more than happy to answer them. I, I hope that, that there isn't too many, because I'm not too smart on a Wednesday morning at nine o'clock in the morning, so. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Well, if you're building a conference room on nuts and forenuts, be sure to invite me. Is there any other comments on this project? Okay, if there's no other questions, no other comments, we'll close the public hearing, and I guess we know what we want to approve here.
If the, if we would so please the planning commission, I could read the recommendation. Okay, approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Sections 15301 and 3, Classes 1 and 3 pertaining to existing facilities and small conversions, and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 17-025.
Uh-huh.
I'll make that motion, we approve the category exemption based on what was.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, which is a special use permit number PSP 17-024, and that's a special use permit for mobile fire support prevention in the AE20, and Andrew Pacheco is our contact.
Good morning, my name is Andrew Pacheco, I'm with the Talar County RMA Planning Division. Today we are going to discuss this application for Mr. Jared Parra, PSP 17-024. Now, this is an application to amend the existing special use permit PSP-14-023, where they are planning to create a maintenance building for maintenance of the equipment of the property that they have for their fire suppression business. Now, the location of the site on this property is on the corner of State Route 65 and Road 201. Now, on this right here, the Caltrans people have indicated that they don't want any connection to State Route 65, so they do not have any approaches at this time. They do have approaches on Road 201, which is a county maintained road, and they have paved approaches to that site. The project was notified on the Visalia Times Delta Thursday, 11 May 2017. People were notified by mail 10 May 2017. Since then, there have been no responses, and nobody's called on this application for oppose or approval of it.
Oh, one up.
Okay. Now, the site is zone AE20, and the surrounding areas are zone AE20. This is in compliance with the special use permit approval with the contractor's storage yard for this facility. Now, mind it, that the approval of this project is within the footprint of the existing special use permit, and that's why it's an amendment. Excuse me? Now, this is a site as it is now through the aerial photos. As you can see, there hasn't been that much done. He has improved it, and the next slide will identify what he's trying to do. If you look at this slide on the left, there's a small box in that area, let me see it right here. This is a proposed building that he's doing for the maintenance building, and notice it's within the footprint. This is the existing one that's been approved. They had have a compliance inspection, they approved their compliance inspection, and they received a letter from the county indicating that they're in compliance with their project at this time. This is the approach that they have. This approach has been paved, it's asphalt paved, even though the dirt is shown that it appears, but it is, I've been out there. This is the direction towards the building through the driveway. Now, if you look at the building right here, this is what they're proposing right now. Now, this building right here has been agreed to be a temporary approval at this time, and there's a letter from the county and the applicant that's been signed off by the planning director, the chief planner, the chief building official, and the applicant himself, indicating that he takes full responsibility of the building. This is a storage yard of area where he keeps his equipment, that he has maintenance done on it. Now, the reason for the building is because in the wintertime, he's been behind on his maintenance because of the adverse weather, and also in the summertime, it gets extremely hot, which could help his employees work better out there if they were inside a building and structure, and he can store his tools. This is the proposed building I was talking about, so you can refer to exhibit D if you have any questions pertaining why we issued the building permit so we can proceed with the building structure of this building. He is under a deadline, and he needs to get his equipment out because he has to be on call at 24/7, on 24/7 for any fires within the Sierra Nevadas or any emergency within the state of California. This is a typical truck that's going to have service. Now, this is a trailer right here with a shower facility being towed, and it's also got the water supply. So these are the typical structures that will have maintenance within that building. Now, the property is not located with any endangered species. As you can see, it's all white. There are no waterways on that site, and the agri- this is not it. The agricultural use of the property is mostly orchards, vineyards, and field crops. Now, the recommendation for staff is approval with category exemption consistent to the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, One, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction, conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 17-024. Okay, now, your alternates would be to move to approve, subject to modifications as discussed, move to deny, or refer back to staff for further report. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Andrew.
Are there any questions?
I remember this project.
You have a question I'm going to ask over here.
This was done a year ago, and we did approve it for the fire suppression system, which they also included a maintenance garage for his equipment to be worked on. Now, the maintenance garage is using, is utilized for the tractor trailers, not so much the trailers, but he needs a place to repair his trailers that he has.
But aren't they also doing maintenance for other people? Aren't they doing repairs?
Yes, they are, but he is doing 51% agricultural services.
Yeah, this is where, they're evolving in this because of all the fires, there's quite a several of them.
So he does have equipment down in the fire areas.
Andrew, once again, wouldn't this just be a building permit? Why is this, why do you have to have another?
Yes, it would, but it exceeds 10% of the structures on the property, so it can't be a minor modification. It has to be an amendment.
Okay.
Okay, to follow the county guidelines and zoning ordinance and ordinance 352. So he has to go through this procedure in order to get his building permit.
All right, I understand now.
And that partially completed building is what he's trying to get the permit on? No, he has a permit. He has temporary approval. That's why I referred to, if you look at your exhibit D, the letter within the packet of the resolution identifies what his responsibility is with that building. Should it be approved or denied?
Okay, I guess if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this particular case? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jared Parra, 23100, Road 201, Lindsay. I'm the owner of the property. As Andrew stated, we have a shop on the property which takes care of our diesel maintenance and other customers that he does service. This shop would be for us to remodel and maintain the inside of our shower trailers, laundry trailers, other equipment. It's going to help us get out of the rain and the heat, and be a little better organized during our maintenance throughout the year. Andrew touched on most of it, but if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Questions for Jared? Pretty reasonable, yeah. All right, thanks, Jared.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If there's any other comments? Seeing none, I think we'll close the public hearing, and then we can entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion, Andrew already did, but I'll re-read it, to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, Sequel, and the State Sequel Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 17-024.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Let's hope we don't need that business system.
Chairman Elliot, on the next.
Item C.
Item C, I will recuse myself, my company has business relationships with.
Embry Group. Yes, so we know what that's about. Thank you, Wayne. Okay, item C then, is Wayne's exhibit. There's a change of zone, number PZC 17-002, the Embry Asset Group, Adam Ramirez, and this is for a site located at the intersection of Betty Drive and Robinson Avenue in the community of Goshen. Our contact is Dana. Good morning, Dana.
I guess I should state it first, that this project, when it went out there, we were going to zone change four parcels, but we've since changed that to only two. And I'll demonstrate, there's some graphics up there. The project is categorically exempt from Sequel pursuant to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and the project would be compatible with this exemption because the proposed structures would be less than 10,000 square feet in area and located within an urban development boundary. The existing zoning is A1, and is intended to ensure that areas zoned A1 develop in a manner consistent with the general plan and the public health, safety, and general welfare. The purpose of the zone is also to prepare for eventual adjustments in zoning based on precise planning and development proposals for such areas. The requested C3 zoning is intended for wholesale establishments and establishments engaged in repairing and servicing equipment, materials, and products, but which do not involve manufacturing, assembling, packaging, or processing of articles of merchandise for distribution and retail sales. If the C3 zoning is approved, the subject site would also be allowed the uses in the C2 general commercial zone and the C1 neighborhood commercial zone. The project is located within the urban development boundary of the community of Goshen and the urban area boundary for the city of Visalia. The general plan land use designation for the project site is industrial, and this designation establishes areas for a range of non-intensive business park, industrial park, and storage uses. The proposed zone change is consistent with these general plan policies and the land use designation. And county sent an early consultation notice to the city of Visalia for the memorandum of understanding pertaining to the future land use entitlements in the urban area boundary, and no comments were received from the city. Staff also performed the RVLP evaluation for the Miu regarding the application of the RVLP checklist to control development in the CAC UAB. And the site received four points indicating that it may be considered for non-agricultural zoning. Project was noticed according to the law. And this is a subject site, two parcels, located on the north side of Betty Drive, east of Highway 99.
Do you have any question? On two of my exhibits on the vicinity maps, I see indicated as the site over on Frontage Road, a small little parcel that's separate by about a quarter mile. What, is that just an oversight, or is that something that, this would be on page?
On the current exhibit.
Catchment number two, the vicinity map for PZC 17-002.
Through the chair, that, yes, that would be, I wouldn't necessarily call it an error, but yes, there is, you've talked about like Road 60.
66?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not included in this.
Okay, because I, had it been on one, I would have said that, but I see it on two exhibits, so.
Right, no, that, that's just the map maker calling that one. Just clarifying.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing up now.
Would anyone like to comment on this particular matter? State your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, my name is Greg Black. I'm with Palmetto Engineering and Land Surveying. Our address is 4300 Ash Road, Suite 103 in Bakersfield, zip code is 93313. Here on behalf of Embry Asset Group today, and would be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the project. Thank you.
Any questions? We haven't really mentioned what the project is, but I think we have a pretty good idea, so.
Through the chair, if you could see the exhibit in front of you, that's the, the only areas that's being rezoned at this time.
Yes, we're, we're not talking about any development, we're just rezoning, just rezoning.
Right, right. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Black. We appreciate you being here.
The proposed site plan for Dollar General.
Any other comments? Well, seeing none, we'll move on then. So Dana can summarize what we're looking at here real quick.
I will. Planning is recommending that the board of, or you should recommend that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guidelines, Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and recommend the board of supervisors approve change of zone number PZC 17-002.
I'll make that motion as presented by Dana.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patignano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion's passed. I think that's, looks like a pretty compatible area with that zone change, so. No.
Wake up.
I'll make a cameo appearance here, Mr. Chair. This is my, I'm recusing myself. This is I, recusing myself on Sequoia Care at the Lake. My company has business with this company. I don't, but...
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Let's see, same Wayne. Okay, this item D is a special use permit, PSP 15-014. It's Sequoia Care at the Lake, Inc., and its Comprehensive Planning Associates. It's a petition to establish a 12-bed congregate living health facility, construction of two buildings. The site is located on the west side of Globe Drive in Springville. And April is our contact.
Good morning Chairman Elliot and Commissioners. The project is to establish an 18-bed congregate living health facility and would consist of construction of one new 7,242 square foot two-story building and a conditional future expansion to a 25-bed facility when the population of Tulare County reaches 500,000. Since the last hearing of June 2015, legislation was passed to increase the number of potential beds from...
Excuse me, April, can I stop you for a second? Velma, is that mic working, or is she just not talking into it?
I think they're all a little bit down, we've been having trouble hearing here, but I'll lean in.
Yeah, I don't think it's working.
Then I'll use my teacher voice.
All right.
Okay. Since the last hearing in June 2015, legislation was passed to increase the number of allowed beds from 12 to 18 per Health and Safety Code, Section 1250 I-1, which came effective in October of 2015. Velma has contributed the draft, revised draft resolution, a revised notice of exemption, and a comment letter, is going to be passing that out. We received a comment letter on Monday. The facility will be allowed to operate up to an 18-bed CLHS pending approval of this use permit, approved by the District Administrator of the California Department of Public Health, approval of the water system by the California, by the County Environmental Health Services Division, and approval of engineered plans by Environmental Health for the wastewater system. When the population of Tulare County reaches 500,000, they could, may increase the number of beds to 25. Once again, the same approvals, the state of California would have to approve a public water system, and the Department of Public Health would have to approve the 25 beds. The public hearing was held at a regular meeting on June 24, 2015, continued to a date uncertain. At that meeting, the public testimony was received and recorded from the agent and from property owners. They expressed concerns about the narrowness of Globe Drive, water supply and quality, and the impacts of increased traffic, exterior lights, and noise. Meetings for, were, for neighbors, were, was held on February 22, attended by five residents. The notice went out to all of the people within the 300-foot range, plus others who had commented. The applicant's and their new agent, Joe Guagliardo...
The chair was also attended by county staff as, as well.
Mr. Guagliardo is the new agent and clarified that the initial application is for 18 residents with the possibility of serving a maximum of 25 at some point in the future. Access will be direct from Globe Drive and not across the dam. Exterior lights will be shielded, and the attendees stated that they are pleased with the operation of the current facility across the lake and have no objections now to the proposed development. Letter is from one of the prime concerned people, is in your packet. Here's an aerial showing the lake with surrounding properties and existing development. Here's a revised site plan to propose one two-story building rather than two single-story buildings. The floor plan with a second floor. The elevation. The project is consistent with the general plan and must comply with the foothill growth management plan development standards. Hospitals and nursing homes are allowed by use permit within the development corridor. Map of the general plan. Project is also consistent with the zoning ordinance with a conditionally approved use permit. Notice for this, for this hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the site boundaries and was published in the Visalia Times Delta. 10-day comment period was provided. One letter was received on Monday, and the comments are in, at the end of the packet handed to you this morning. This ends staff's presentation. Have any questions? The agent and the applicants are in the audience.
As I remember this, I know there was some objection to the lighting, I think they showed the lighting, probably didn't really make a big difference.
Permission of approval to shield.
Okay, so there's no further questions. This is a public hearing, so anyone like to speak on this? Please state your name and address.
Good morning, Mr. Chair... That microphone works. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Joe Guagliardo, 5414 East Pitt Avenue, Fresno, California. In situations like this, I appreciate members of the commission trying to be respectful and address me as Mr. Guagliardo, but for all of our purposes, if you have questions, please refer to me as Joe, and it just makes all of our lives a lot easier, and I'll know who you're talking to. Mr. Chairman, as you recall correctly, the previous hearing on this was somewhat contentious, and neighbors were very concerned about the project. Since that time, the applicants have been operating a similar facility for about two and a half years. They have addressed the neighbors' concerns. The neighbors were quite complimentary when we had our neighborhood meeting. We sent out, I want to say about 45 to 50 letters of inviting folks to a meeting at the Veterans Building in Springville. We had about five folks show up. None of them expressed any concerns or issues relating to this project. The applicants are experienced operators, they understand how to operate these facilities, they understood some of the management issues, and they corrected them, and they will be addressed in this proposed use as well. I would like to note that again and reinforce the fact that this would be an 18-bed facility. There's been changes in state law, and somehow it didn't get picked up in the different documents, and I apologize for that. But it would be an 18-bed facility with the opportunity potentially to go 25 beds as population within the community increases, per state law. The facilities would be fully licensed by the state of California, regular inspections by the state, by the county, by the fire district. Operate 24 hours a day with skilled nursing on-site. I would like to just make one other quick point, and, and it's a, it's a minor point, and we'll deal with it with staff. The, the correct operating entity is actually Sierra Care at the Lake LLC 2, not Sequoia Care, but that's a, just a, again, a paperwork type thing that I'm sure we can address with staff. These facilities are in great demand because of the needs within the communities for long-term health care. Additionally, in the Springville area, one of the positive aspects of this is this is going to create job opportunities for people who have skilled nursing sets, that they don't have to wind up going to Porterville or going into Tulare or Visalia, they'll be able to work within their community. I could go on for about 20 minutes, but I would be more happy to answer questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Wayne. This original build-out, is, is it going to be, have the capacity eventually to have 25 beds in it, on the original build-out?
It, it...
Or are you going to have to come in and, with an expansion to get the, the capacity of the day?
We would, we would probably, we would have to come back in with an expansion too, because the building we're designing now is designed to accommodate 18 beds.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't think there is, but if there is any opposition, I'd like the opportunity to speak into that.
Thank you. That's built into the process. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, I guess we could, any other questions? We'll close the public hearing and move on to, any more questions or echo?
I don't have a question, I just comment. I read several of the letters and comments that were made, and it seems to be all the people that came in that we listened to and were very concerned about the project, they all seem to be very happy with the way things are going. That's a, that's great.
The initial reaction in a lot of these is, not in my neighborhood, but like we're realizing in Three Rivers, we need one of these, and you would really like someone to come up there and do a proposal to put one of these in Three Rivers. So without any further discussion, I think we can summarize what we need to do here if we already know. Anything you want to add to that, April?
If I may raise the motion for you, sir?
Yeah.
Recommendation is to accept a categorical exemption and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 15014 to establish an 18-bed congregate living health facility for non-ambulatory bedridden residents consisting of the construction of one 7,242 square foot two-story building and a conditional future expansion to a 25-bed facility.
We have no other questions, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve that categorical exemption as April described. Second there.
Roll call please.
Tom?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Tignana?
Yes.
Aguila?
Yes.
All right, now we can get Wayne again, you know? Can you get Wayne? We got another one on here coming up. Okay, we can move on now to item E, which is the final site plan, number PSR 15-003. That's the Miramonte Sanitation, Inc. Again, Comprehensive Planning Associates. And this is, site is located the south side of 430 Road, 68 west of the Bang River. And it looks like a Bang River.
Good morning Chairman Elliot and Commissioners, I'm April Hill, Planner 3 at County's Planning Branch. The applicant's... Will you give me a second to reboot the microphones, because we can't, they're not having trouble hearing. There you go.
Got ignition? I know mine's on.
Mine's on.
Good catch, Velma.
Going to be ready for this increased volume.
Oh, there we go. You are here.
Hello.
Can hear all of you as well. Good morning Chairman Elliot and Commissioners, I'm April Hill, Planner 3 from County's Planning Branch. The applicant, Miramonte Sanitation proposes some internal improvements to an existing trucking terminal that is allowed by right in the M2 zone. The reason for this, our appearance today is that these internal improvements involve building permits which trigger a final site plan due to the SR site review overlay zone. The internal, the building permits are for, are as, for as-built improvements, an existing storage mezzanine inside an exist, inside an existing shop building, and an existing metal storage building that replaced a wooden storage building. The final site plan was required. The applicant's five-acre lease area is on an 18 and a half acre parcel that's located at the intersection of Avenue 430 and Road 68 in the Port of Ivory Industrial Park, about 4,800 feet west of Dinuba City limits. The site is within the Dinuba General Plan's over, overall planning boundary, but outside the county adopted urban area boundary. City designated state for industrial reserves stated that the proposal would be consistent with the Dinuba zoning classification of light industrial, which also permits trucking terminals with the approval of an administrative plan site, site plan review. There are no plans to annex the subject site at this time. The county's general plan, rural valley lands plan designates the area for valley agriculture. It is consistent with relevant elements of the general plan with a conditionally approved final site plan. As mentioned, the site is in the Port of Ivory Industrial Park and zoned M2SR heavy manufacturing site review combining zone. The project is consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations and development standards applicable to the use. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption from California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines. There are only minor technical, technical changes. The proposed project would not have an impact on biological resources. Traver Canal is about 250 feet west of the leased area, so it is not impacted either. The site plan, which is oriented north to south to your right, shows an existing 17,540 square foot shop and storage building with an open bay, a 480 square foot storage building, a concrete pad with a closed-loop wash rack system, which has equipment for washing out the roll-off bins, the garbage tote bins, and truck exteriors. There's a 4,000 gallon above-ground fuel storage tank located within a few contain, concrete containment enclosure. There's an employee parking area with 15, more, more, more or less parking spaces, an ADA compliant van parking space. There's truck parking areas on concrete, a six-foot-high chain link fence, and mature landscaping trees and shrubs around the perimeter of the area. The company's activities are restricted to a well-defined five-acre lease area in the Port of Ivory Industrial Park. The company does not store any waste material on the subject five-acre lease facility, only stores trucks and empty trash bins. 10 trucks operate from the facility and may increase to 12. The trucks operate Monday through Friday and occasionally on Saturdays. Drivers arrive on-site at about 5:30 a.m. and leave for their routes by 6:00, and they return between 3:00 p.m. and 3:30 p.m. A total of 19 Miramonte employees work on the subject site with a possible increase to 23 at some point in the future. There are two full-time and two part-time staff, plus a manager, working in the main industrial park office, which is not on this particular parcel. The aerial shows the applicant's existing structures in the southeast corner of the 18, 18 and a half foot, 18 and a half acre parcel. It also shows existing, Port of Ivory tenants to the south, off-site agricultural-related businesses, agriculture, and scattered rural residences. Here's a 2011 view of the entrance to Miramonte Senate, Miramonte Truck Terminal from Road 68. There's a 2011 view of the landscaping, which has build-out even more. Here's a view from Road 26, Road 68 further north, and a view of the facility from... facility from Avenue four thirty-two and Road sixty-eight. Once again, these are the young plants which have filled out considerably. The notice for the public hearing and provided a ten-day comment period and was mailed to surrounding property owners within a thousand foot, within a thousand feet, which is a larger area than the required three hundred feet. It was also published in the Visalia Times Delta. Because Miramonte Sanitation is a tenant in the Port of Ivory Industrial Park, the notice was also mailed to parties involved in the two thousand twelve settlement agreement between Richard Best Transfer, the Port of Ivory, and Dinuba citizens for responsible planning, including Roger Wostatski and Attorney Richard Harriman. As a note, Mr. Wostatski's properties are located about thirty-six hundred feet southeast of the applicant's lease area. Comments were received from Mr. Harriman and Mr. Wostatski. The comments and staff responses have been distributed to the Commissioners, staff, County Council, the applicant and agent, as well as to Mr. Wostatski, who is here in the audience. In response to Mr. Harriman's comments, uh, the paved area takes up four acres of the five acre, five acre lease area. Drainage improvements were, uh, had been existing from the past sawmill. Traver Canal is two hundred fifty feet from the paved area. There, there was a reference to a ponding basin designation from the Dinuba General Plan, which shows a park along the canal. However, the city is not planning to annex. Getting audio here. Um, can you talk?
Sounds like it. Just got to get a little closer.
Okay.
No, it's going up and on.
Okay.
Oh, is it?
I'm sure technicians will be taking care of it before the next board meeting, and, uh, okay, so-
Yes, for the record, start from the top, please.
Thank you. In response to Mr. Harriman's comment letter, uh, the paved area, it takes up about four acres of the five-acre lease area. Drainage improvements happen to, were, uh, exist, are existing and have been since the sawmill was established, um, was operating. Traver Canal is about two hundred fifty feet from the paved area. And the- Ponding basin designation is from the Dinuba General Plan, which shows an area along the Traver Canal as a park slash ponding basin. However, the city is not annexing. And as I said before, Traver Canal is two hundred fifty feet away. The county has not adopted the Dinuba General Plan. Here's an aerial showing Traver Canal from the, from Avenue four thirty-two looking south towards the, um, on, along the parcel. Shows no riparian habitat. Agriculture on the west and the oleander bushes for screening the site on the east. Regarding the wash rack, the Regional Water Quality Control Board inspected the system in two thousand nine, but has no requirements for the operation other than regular cleaning of the sump and filter system and a proper disposal of wastewater. The wash rack is a closed-loop system, closed-loop rack used for cleaning the trash bins and exteriors. Truck interiors are not washed out on the site. The wash rack is on a concrete pad and is equipped with an underground vault and a water recycling system. County Building Inspector and I went out there last year and verified that with the Continued response to Mr. Harriman's comments, the diesel fuel tank, safety measures were addressed at the building permit stage. In a geology section, a correction, no house is proposed on the site. Regarding the water supply, the Port of Ivory is responsible.
Excuse me.
For parking, drivers, the truck repairmen and the wash rack employees park on the lease area. Officer, office workers park by the main Port of Ivory office. There is adequate parking for employees and adequate space for the trucks to park. In response to Mr. Wostatski's comments, I went over the trash truck cleaning, not done on the site. The wash rack was approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The wash rack is used to clean the exteriors of the trucks and, uh, trash bins. Regarding comments about the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, the project will not exceed the twenty-five thousand square foot threshold for industrial space and must comply with rules and regulations. There are some improvements existing on the site. These, these comments and the reason for the final site plan is to adjust building permits. The traffic trips, the traffic analysis that was completed by previous final site plan for Richard Best Transfer and the Port of Ivory Master Site Plan included the applicant's traffic. Existing road network is adequate per the traffic analysis. On truck routes, the trucks go north on Av, on Road sixty-eight to Road Avenue four thirty-two or go west on Avenue four thirty to Road eighty. This ends staff's presentation. If you have any questions for me, I would be happy to, or for the agent, Joe Guadliardo, or for the applicant, Tim Guy, we'd be happy to help you.
We'll open the public hearing then.
Chairman, before we get anybody to speak on that, may I make a quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, looking here at the project overview here, I want to just remind everyone, I think we're just looking at, uh, the, the building of a, a mezzanine in an inside of an existing building. We're looking at replacing a four hundred square foot, uh, wooden bill, storage building with a metal one and putting a shade over the, over the wash rack, not dealing with truck trips or traffic or anything else. And I don't want to get into rehashing the Port of Ivory's permit again.
And also through the chair, these are as-built building permits.
Yeah, the only reason they're even here is because it's got an SR overlay, oh, on the zone, right?
That is correct.
Right, okay. So just keep it within-
Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone like to speak on this project?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Joe Guagliardo, five-four-one-four, East Pitt, Fresno, California, representing Miramonte Sanitation. I appreciate the, the clarification to the application. This is very similar to the previous one you heard earlier this morning. Uh, it's, and I'll tell you, it's unique to Tulare County, uh, that when you do a building permit, you come in for a site plan review for a public hearing, but that's, it's really not an issue. There are a couple of things, unfortunately, uh, that I think I need to put on the record, uh, and please bear with me, I'll make this as concise as I possibly can. This project does not represent any change in the operational characteristics of what's been, uh, Miramonte's sanitation's operation for the past eight years. There's no increase in truck traffic, there's no increase in, in other activities on the site. This is strictly to accommodate, uh, minor building changes on the property, uh, one of which actually is to improve the accessibility of the restrooms, as an example. The project has been reviewed by Tulare County Environmental Health, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, everybody you can imagine has looked at this project, Caltrans has even looked at the project. No issues have been identified relating to the proposed project. One, uh, small point of clarification to April's presentation, uh, April stated about the, uh, the containers being cleaned on-site. The containers that are cleaned on-site are the little totes, the little plastic ones that are at, at people's homes. The roll-off containers do not get, do not get cleaned. Uh, so it's the small totes, they are cleaned on the concrete pad. It's a closed-loop system, so water is captured, it's filtered, uh, solids and other materials go into a containment area and they're pumped out on a regular basis, uh, and the water is reused and the cleaning chemicals are reused because quite honestly, they're very expensive. The trucks leave the site empty, they return to the site empty. And, uh, I doubt that many of you have had the opportunity to be inside of a garbage truck, but I can tell you in a previous life, when I was going to Fresno State, I actually cleaned garbage trucks for the city of Fresno. And the way the garbage trucks are designed is they are essentially a clean bore. So there's no nooks and crannies and sharp edges and corners for material to be trapped. So when the truck goes to the landfill and the ram pushes the material out of the truck, the truck is, the interior is vacated, there is, you know, no material left inside of I, I think that pretty much sums up the, the relevant points to this. Again, there's no changes to the operations. The, the site, as noted in the, in the staff report and in our operational statement, we're two hundred and fifty feet from the Traver Canal, and there's a reference from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife saying that there's no impact relating to anything relating to the canal or to the creek or wherever you want to characterize The photographs that, uh, April provided you, you'll see it's mature landscaping for most part. Please note it was a two thousand eleven photograph and those small little oleanders, those of you who know oleanders in about six years grow up pretty big. So the site is completely screened. We've had no complaints, no concerns issued from either the county or from residents in the area. It's a needed service to the community, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have relating to the project.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing, anybody like to speak for or against the project?
Please state your name and address for the record. Yeah, I'm Roger Wostatski, uh, four-two-four-eight-one, Road seventy-two, Dinuba. And I'm about, according to what I looked on the map here, estimated four-three-hundred feet, uh, southeast of the actual Miramonte location. And I don't really have any substantial complaint about their operation up there. I hardly hear it or know what they're doing because it's way up in the distance and I don't go by there very often. But however, you know, I've got nine printed-out pamphlets here I'm printing in for you to inspect. There are six pages to each one, and it has a map on there that I want to point out some features about the, uh, situation.
Now, overall, we're dealing with, uh, Port of Ivory and RBT and Miramonte, since they all come under the, uh, designation of Port of Ivory. And, uh, so sometimes, how do we know who we're dealing with when it's a big complex of about six parcels? But this map I'm talking about, page two, uh, people may not think it's that much of a concern, but I'm pointing out this, uh, unusually narrow bridge that's on Avenue four-twenty-four that Traver Creek goes under. It's only got about one or two feet on the north side of it, between the concrete portion that sticks up there in the air, about three feet. And there's no room to get off. If you're meeting somebody and they come over the line, you've got no place to go. So they should expand this whole thing about eight feet on each side in view of the fact, too, that the county has approved a couple of projects here that puts more-
Truck traffic in the general area. Like if two big rigs were coming, meeting each other here, I don't know that they could even get through unless they slowed way down and inched on through.
Now, the route of where the trash trucks are supposed to go to leave their site wasn't really spelled out, uh, in the overall plan that they had on the hundred-page document, but April did explain it a little more. And I just want to point out, uh, maybe nobody cares much about it, but, uh, they had to go east to get Road eighty rather than west, like was mentioned, and up there on the viewer. So about the only concern or a few is that, uh, we don't really know what route they go, uh, all the time, but if it's going to be up there to the north and not come down into my area, even if they did once in a while, probably not too big of a deal. But if they weren't cleaned out well and they dropped toxic material up and down the road, then that would be potential problem. And I wanted to point out, too, that, uh, while they said the previous, uh, traffic study that RBT had, well, this will be good enough for Miramonte, too. But however, that traffic study never, uh, evaluated the intersection of, uh, Avenue four-twenty-four and Road seventy-two or Nebraska Avenue. And Nebraska Avenue, in my analysis, is one of the main routes between Reedley and Dinuba and probably a lot of people going to Walmart and so forth over there. There's probably sometimes five hundred or a thousand cars pass through there in one day. I'd have to, I mean, that's just a, like a rough estimation. They said there was no, uh, study done on the traffic for the Miramonte portion of the situation, uh, because it didn't have enough, uh, daily trips. But I was pointing out, and probably you read in one of the letters, that, uh, the traffic situation comes under several people there, and if already, uh, it's near a certain threshold with RBT, then the addition of, uh, Miramonte's traffic, too, might put it into the, over the threshold where they would need a traffic study. But probably, I, I would admit, probably, uh, the study they did already won't make that much difference if they did another one.
Mr.-
Now, about the last point-
Mr. Wostatski, uh, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, can you explain to me how this relates to putting a canopy over the wash rack?
Uh, I was pointing out that it wasn't really originally delineated which direction the-
What we're talking about here.
-project trucks went, and if-
Oh, that's what we're talking about here, sir.
Do the approval of this new section, this was an operation plan, too, they're, uh, finalizing, too, in addition to the improvements, wasn't it?
Maybe, no, I don't know. Maybe you can explain to me how this relates to building a mezzanine in an existing building, because I'm at a loss here right now.
We understand your comments as they relate to the other sites. That's not a problem, Roger, and we appreciate you being here, but we, we got to stay on task here to what we're considering today.
Okay, that just about covers it then. Uh, subject, final site plan, number PSR one-five-zero-three. So you're indicating that that's not really pertinent to the overall, that much total operation, but when they say final site plan, you're scaling it down to about three items that they're doing like a minor improvement for which they don't have to really do that much evaluation because it's categorically exempt under CEQA.
That's what the planning staff is recommending, yes.
Through the chair?
So that pretty well covers what I had to comment. Uh, if you could work on widening that bridge, that's where you- If you could work on widening that bridge, it's really a hazardous situation.
Through the chair, if I may, Hector Guerra, Chief Planner, RMA. As a matter of fact, Mr. Wazdowski and General Public, Caltrans is funding replacement of that bridge. They recognize that it was, it's an obsolete bridge and over the course of years, farm equipment, trucking, all of that has widened. So that bridge is eventually going to be replaced. As a matter of fact, we're doing environmental on that already. A lot of studies have been done on that already, so they're designing it. I don't know exactly when it's going to go to construction, but that bridge will be replaced with a wider bridge.
Well, that's good to know because I'm kind of afraid to pass through there when people are speeding in the opposite direction.
Sure.
You've got to slow down or speed up to not meet them right on the bridge.
Correct. It may not happen overnight, but it is going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Roger. It looks like we're making progress on that bridge anyway. Caltrans moves slowly, but we'll get that one done. Any other comments on this particular item here? And this Final Site Plan for the Miramonte.
Make a motion, John.
Okay, hold on, we've got to close the public. We'll close the public hearing then, saying none, and we will entertain a motion.
In the motion, I make a motion we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Barment of Quality Act and the State CEQA Guide in Pursuit to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15301, Regarding Interior Alternation, Operation of the Existing Building, and Section 15303, Regarding New Construction of Small Structure and Traditionally Approved Upon the Site Plan Number PSR 1500.
Through the chair. That would be, by request of the applicant, we would like to continue to date uncertain the next time. All right, never mind. Continue on.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We don't want to stop now.
Fighting in home now.
Home free. You've finished your, I second that motion.
Is there a roll call, please?
Don?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Patek Liano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, well, if, and I want to make a comment. On Miramonte too, they're washing out the totes. They should, they're setting a good example, so it's certainly nothing, and I like it. I think it was a good project. I know, and two different companies. Okay, if we can move on then to the Director's Report, that's probably going to be on today.
Correct. Chairman Elliot, Mike Washum is absent today while he does county's business elsewhere. I did want to announce that Mike Washum has been promoted to Associate Director of RMA, and so we'd like to congratulate him. Other updates I do have at this time, as we are getting closer and closer to completing the Early March Community Plan, and we are almost to the verge of having an administrative draft environmental impact report, so that one's very, very close. There was some negotiation recently for the new water connection fee for the park itself that, in discussions with Dennis Keller, we think we have resolved that, but that also had some implications to the overall water and wastewater report we had presented back to Dennis Keller. So when we get his final comments to that, we believe we can move forward with the draft EIR for Early March.
I have a question on that. So because of this overdraft, this water that's going on right now, all of these legislations, will those community plans have to be updated that we have already?
Basically.
Because it's going to be a pretty big change.
Sigma, when it does come online, 2020, we are looking at, you will be given basically the water, use the same rates of water as you had previously existing with, so we'll be kind of locked in place at those times, so you could say they're grandfathered to a large extent. And as we move through this process, we will, and we are denoting Sigma the new law, but again, since those, we don't, we don't know what that sustainability level is yet, it would be really tough to force any development projects or any of our current communities to have to live up to any restrictions that don't exist yet. So CEQA's a little speculative still, but we, as a full disclosure document, we do discuss it.
It'll be like an amendment after 2020?
It could be. We'll see what the, the authorities are going to be basically, GSAs, so whatever they come up with, and it's going to be mostly from what we're seeing on, especially in Tulare County, on the irrigation district side. So what the, but what the other water purveyors do require will be more to them and not necessarily on a community plan basis. So it's, it depends how we want to treat it in the future, but that's, Sigma really is drilled down to the water purveyor and the irrigation districts.
Anything else, man?
Early March, a big one on our horizon, but outside of that, I would like to report that we are on the road to probably doing over 400 projects this year. Last year, we did about 370. So we are, we are really working as hard as we can to make the process as streamlined as possible for the applicants. But I don't have much more to add, do you, public works?
Johnson and I met you guys about a year ago, but here I am again. As far as major projects, right now, we are closing out the East Portugal Well Project. That one's going pretty well. Now, the well has been permitted and the city is using it now, but the project in actual East Portugal, that one's still going, that's, the project's run by the state, so we're not too involved, but we do, one of our chief engineers, Johnny Wong, he is involved in terms of the maintenance and attending the weekly meetings from the city of Portugal. But the well project itself is closing and we anticipate closing the project out by the end of, by the end. Other major projects that will be going into construction includes the, one of the projects for the Farmer Market, which is the Avenue 280 overlay project. Another major one too would be the Avenue 280 winding project between State Route 99 and Road 100, which would be acreage. Other than that, we do have the projects that are currently in construction, it includes the Munson Well Project, that one's moving along as well. And also, we're hoping to secure additional funding for the Yedam Civil Project as well. They have a lot of projects moving forward, and if you have any questions?
I just saw this this morning in online journal, Governor Brown is proposing a $50 million cut to this tree mortality project. Is that going to affect the Lurin County?
Tree mortality project?
This is eliminate, you know, cutting out all the dead trees and the fire suppression efforts.
My understanding of the, I'm not too involved in tree mortality, but I was involved with phase two of the tree mortality, and I know that budget for that project is definitely limited, so I know what we're using to fund for that project isn't from any external sources, rather it's from, I believe, I'd like to say the general fund, but I could be wrong on that.
So these monies that he's cutting?
It's not going to affect us, and I'd like to, yeah, my understanding is that we're not, we don't, we're not receiving any funding from any external sources.
That's CDF, actually, I thought it.
Where's that going?
Thank you.
Well, California Department of Forestry.
What jurisdiction do they have?
It's going to go around. From what I heard, it's distributed through the entire agency.
State Fair area up there at all?
I don't, well, they're not already, in the tree mortality, they're not really actively cutting and clearing. The other agencies are, and not CDF. CDF is more a reaction to it if there's a fire, and that's what's kind of scary about those cuts.
Well, all the quotes in the article are pretty concerned.
Any cuts in those fire measures are a reason for concern.
Through the chair, there is, there is some monies that's definitely getting funded through the county, especially the Office of Emergency Services, so there will most likely be an impact to us.
Yeah. It's a big project. I hadn't heard that about the cut, but I do know just from what our office does and the contracts, there is some money that the county is receiving through the state legality in cutting down dead trees. As you probably know, there's so many trees that need to be cut down, wiped out, almost wiped out, our, without these cuts. RMA is not that involved with it. It is going through the Office of Emergency Services. So do we get federal money, Clint? Because the national parks are affected here today.
Yeah.
Federal money? Do we get federal money?
I don't know where all the money's coming from.
Department of Interior?
I just, I just know the state gives us some money. I don't know where all the money's coming from.
If you want to look how the project's working, you can drive up through Badger and into Kings Canyon area, and there's tons of trees that are laying down now next to the road. They have not been cleared, but they've been cut. So what they did on the first phase of this is target the areas that might impact roads or other developed areas.
The agency cut them down.
There was a cooperative between Forest Service and the county, and as far as I know, the national parks working on too, to identify which of the hazard trees.
And utilities.
Yeah, and the utilities too are pitching in because it's, it could affect them worse than anything, really. But there's just tons of trees laying down. It's almost surprising to see them all. So they have been cutting a lot.
Well, through the chair, we'd like to give you a more formal update, so we all have our ducks in the row.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So in about three weeks from now, we can come back.
Yeah.
Three meetings from now.
It'll be good. That's an issue that's going to affect us all.
Yeah.
Because a long time to come.
If you don't take care of it, another nature will do it.
Well.
Trying to stop fires.
Another thing I'd recommend is go look at the Rim Fire or the last fire that burned in 2015. And that fire, you know, burned so much, but now that land's coming back and it's, it really is, and there's a lot, there's a lot of new trees growing too.
Well, if there's a major forest fire up there, and there will be chances are, there's always a silver lining. It's going to be a disaster for a few years, but I.
Yeah, it's coming back.
It'll come back.
Come back and it'll be better. Your population will be better.
Right.
Be a lot of deer out there, because they used to do a deer hunt.
Well, I know I chased all the bears in the theory version. Lots of those too. Okay, well, I think that's a good item for discussion on a future agenda. That'd be great. Anything else from the staff?
That completes the Director's Report.
All right, on our, do we have anything, well, we talked about future agenda, I mean, that was good. I want to make one comment more about the conference. On Sunday, I met with our incoming president for 2018, and he's already been on it for the city of Redding. And we actually went to the construction site. They're building a brand-new Sheraton, and it's right next to the Sacramento River. And they're on a network of trails there, which is going to be very interesting because that trail from that point goes up about 10 miles to Shasta Dam. And Shasta Lake, as you know, Lake Shasta, 4.25 million acreage, and it's full to the brim right now. Now, contrast that to Terminus Dam, which is almost full, at 185,000 acreage. So we've got two, you see a whole new scope when we go there. And then there's a pedestrian bridge that was designed by a famous Italian architect that spans the trails. It was completed at a cost of $12 million, and it, when you're on it, you can't even believe that they would need a bridge like that because it's so beautifully designed and it lights up at night.
That's the Sundial Bridge?
Yeah, the Sundial Bridge. And it really is a, so I asked the question, you know, how did they get the funding for this? And there's a real estate foundation from that area that contributed a lot of the cost overruns on the project and made sure it was done. So we're going to learn about that partnership, and it sounds like we're in for a really good conference in Redding. We're also working on a kind of cruise of Shasta for our dinner. The only problem is that date that we have, that same weekend as this year, is they're not running their regular trips yet, so we're going to try to get them to come out and just do one for the planning commissioners. Anyway, it's coming together, and we're going to get some marketing out this year with Wayne's help, and I think we're going to look for a great conference in 2018 too. So if there's any other items, or anybody else has a comment, if not, that's a June to June 14.